Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the June 23rd School Board Planning Meeting for the Dover Area School District. If you could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we have roll call, Mrs. Benko?
Mrs. Britton here. Mr. Cook?
Here.
Mr. DeSho?
Here.
Mr. Delauter?
Here.
Mr. Eifert?
Here.
Mr. Emmig?
Here.
Mrs. Herman?
Here.
Mrs. Maylie?
Here.
Mr. Rahouser?
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Celebrations is our first category. Do we have anything on the agenda tonight for that, Mr. Cherry? Okay. We'll move on to Communications. This is the first public comment period. This is a three-minute period for items on or off of the agenda tonight. If you would like to make any comments, please come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record.
My name's Andrew Walker, and as of Tuesday, I was hired at Lyd Elementary to be a special ed teacher. I am super excited and just want to put a face to the name, and Dover proud, right?
Thank you, Mr. Walker. Welcome.
Doing well.
Anybody else for public comment? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to Board President's Communication. We did have an executive session following Tuesday night's meeting to discuss a personnel situation. That was that. And other communication items, I do not have anything else to add tonight. So we'll move right into our reports. First one will be Comprehensive Planning with Mrs. Maylie.
And I apologize for those of you who are just here. They'd be reading the same exact thing. Essentially, it's a press release that we put together based on the survey that had gone out. And I'm not sure exactly when this will go out. Is there a ... did we decide on ...
If you send it to us, we can upload it whenever, and we can put it on Facebook and Twitter.
Okay. So it simply states, "During the spring, a customer satisfaction survey was conducted to provide information from various stakeholders living and working within the Dover Area School District. Results were tabulated and analyzed, producing the following focal points as we begin the 2016-17 school year. One, creating and promoting a sense of belonging and pride for all. Two, continuously striving to meet the needs of all learners. And three, creating a positive environment for all. These focal points will be addressed through our district-wide Positive Behavior Interventions and Support Initiative, as well as our three-pronged academic focus of ingenuity, effectiveness, and core instruction. We appreciate your support as we endeavor to be Dover proud." And that's really all I have.
Any questions from the board members tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the Curriculum and Professional Development Committee with Mr. Delauter.
Okay. We started this evening with discussing our final Skyward Gradebook breakdown, and the breakdown is going to be as follows. So these are the things that our students K through 12 are going to be graded on, understanding that as you move up through the grades, different emphasis is going to be placed on, obviously, different parts of this breakdown. But we're going to look at tests being 40 percent of the grade, quizzes are going to count for 20 percent, projects and labs at 25 percent, classwork at 10 percent, and homework at 5 percent. And basically, during our discussions, there was a lot of discussion pertaining to the homework portion of this. And from my understanding, I mean, that if you're a teacher who does not normally grade homework, you just do not put anything into that grade, and the algorithm that has been created for Skyward will take that into consideration and calculate the grade without using that homework portion. So it's not going to negatively affect those students. So, again, we're going to roll this out, K through 12, and having a lot of consistency, hopefully, throughout our K to 12 school. If you remember back, a couple months ago, we talked about, we also, as part of this whole grading program in the elementary school, have moved away from a standards-based report card and have now going to a percentages-type grading, again, from K through 12, so that we have some consistency. And this is a part of some feedback that we've received over the last two years from parents who basically said the old standard-based report card was too difficult to understand, and basically just want to know how their students did. So this is as a result of that. With that, again, I just want to publicly thank all the staff and teachers who participated in getting us to where we are today. This was a two-year-long, sometimes, at least for me, frustrating endeavor to get where we are today. So again, the teachers, I'm blown away by the compromise that you all did. I don't think anybody got 100 percent of what they wanted out of this, but I think we came together, and I think we have a really good grading program that's going to do us well for the next, hopefully, long haul for that. As far as getting it out to the masses, we're going to include this on our handbooks, so all students and teachers will have the breakdown, and they'll be able to see the breakdown in the student handbook, which will be online this year. But we will make sure that there are hard copies available for those folks who do not or cannot get onto the Internet to find that. And then, the next thing we talked about was just two FYI items. The first was, we're given a list of student teachers for this upcoming fall semester. We have 11 students that will be student teaching in the district this fall, mainly in learning support and the elementary schools. And then, the final FYI item was the new teacher induction program. This was originally part of our comprehension ... yeah, comprehension. No, comprehensive planning. I got it. But we did some changes, made it more detailed. So we have sent that to the state for their approval. Our induction program has gone from a year, that we're now increasing it to two years, with a lot of, I think, really more, again, detailed accomplishments that the new teacher needs to complete, which, again, I'm hoping will be a good thing for our teachers. So again, that's going to the state for approval before that gets done. That's it. Kathy, anything that you want to add to that?
I think he did it. You're fine, Kathy. You're great.
That's all I have.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Delauter and Mrs. Herman?
I do have a question. Just in terms of, so this is going to be put on our website for the parents to look at, they'll have the handbook. How will our parents know when it's put on? Are we going to send a global connect? Is it, if it's just automatically on the website, me personally, I'm not great about checking the website. I'm guilty of that. So I'm not necessarily going to say, hey, I wonder if it's on there and search for it. I think that we need to have a plan for how we're going to notify parents that it's there for them to look at, and that they should do that, or request a paper copy.
We can certainly do a global connect, website, Twitter, Facebook, so we'll get it out there.
All right, thank you.
Well, are they still going to have to sign? They always had to sign a paper saying that they did read the handbook. So is that ...
Skyward gives us the ability for them to do those electronic signatures and so forth, so we'll be able to collect them that way.
Chuck, I apologize if you mentioned this, but this is going to be up for board approval. I'm assuming the grading changes next month, and is this going to be implemented, then, for this coming year? Is that the plan?
I'm not sure that needs to be board-approved.
No.
But it will be implemented for this ...
For the coming year.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Just, Steve, the actual policy itself, we just approved on Tuesday, so, I mean, I ...
So it's basically the implementation of that policy. Okay, got it.
Anything else? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to Facilities with Mr. Emmig.
In our meeting tonight, first of all, we went over some D-10 requests. First item is the stadium to deep-clean the field and add top dressing where required. That will begin July the 4th. Replace the fire alarm at, which was not replaced during the previous renovations. There are numerous issues. That will begin next week. Intercom system will begin next week. Tennis courts, that was approved on Tuesday night, will start on July the 4th. Painting of interior buildings and hallways is uncertain start time at this point. The pool, we are working with the contractor. Blinds, we're waiting on a quote. Demand response. They began the hardware for the response the 21st and 22nd of June, and MedEd has already four out of seven meters completed that are needed for this. The marquee at this point is still in talking stages. We're still trying to come up with more funds, more to help pay for this, and iPads and new iPads in cases have already been ordered. And of course, the big topic that was discussed was the building. We discussed location, ball fields, should we go to the intermediate school. The ball fields will not be usable for at least two years, possibly adding a signal light. Also, if we would need to expand onto the, where the high school would go, the intermediate school, we could add a third floor if needed, if possible. So at this point, the committee decided that on this program that we had moving forward, the committee is sending a recommendation to vote on Tuesday, July 19th, for the board to approve a new high school. If the board votes on a new high school, then the next item would be creating a project team, and then an RFP for Architectural Services. We are going to make sure that we include everybody possible on these project teams. This is an item that we're not going to rush into. The project team would decide where the location would be and any other things that we would need. So that's about all that the committee had talked about tonight, and the big topic, like I said, was the building.
Any questions for Mr. Emmig or Mr. Rahouser?
Just wanted to comment about the marquee you had mentioned about using more funds. I do know, it was announced at the graduation, that the class of 2016 had also donated, I believe it was $4,000 towards that project. So we've had two previous classes now that have ...
What we're going to do, if the board next month votes to have a new building, we're going to go after the contractors for the new building to help pay for this marquee so we don't have to put any more money out. That is the recommendation that we have discussed tonight at the committee level.
Another thing that was discussed that Terry didn't mention, we're all optimistic. That's one of the reasons the committee's in agreement, that if we get our supposedly $2.5, $3 million from the state, which they owe us from the last two building projects, and with the reserve we have, we might be able to pull this off without any tax increases.
But however, the state money, if we receive that, the board could decide to put that separate, and we could use that to offset a tax increase in the future.
I have a question. If we do that with, and use the reserves, how much of the reserves will be using, and is that going to leave us in a vulnerable position going forward?
Mrs. Benko can help answer that.
Sorry. And too, if you want to, I don't know if you looked at the presentation from Tuesday. There's some information in there that may be of help to you. But to sum it up quickly, right now, our capital project reserves in our capital project fund are, we're projecting them to be about $9.6 million. We did our financial projections for the project, and those presentations are in that, on board docs for that meeting also. We did our projections based on using $6 million of funds and $8 million of funds because we figured the $6 million of funds, that's what we can use out of the capital projects reserves. However, we have monies in our general fund that are unassigned, that we can move also to capital projects. Our general fund projected ending fund balance is like 12 million, 12-point-something million. So the $8 million, though, is dependent on getting the PlanCon funds that he was talking about and utilizing those. So either six or eight million dollars, depending on when we get those funds. The only reason I say that is just because at work, as you know, I work for the State House, and our caucus had a few million dollars in reserves for years, and we got a few members who were like, you know, we don't need all this surplus, you know, let's use it for this. And I get that, and it's good to use it, that's what it's there for. But now, when we had no budget last year, they could barely pay the bills. We had to borrow from the Treasury to pay payroll. I just don't want to, I just, I'm cautiously optimistic. I just, I'm not poo-pooing anything. I just want to make sure that we are cognizant of that as we proceed with everything, that I really want to make sure that it's not going to be, you know, five, 10 years down the road, and we say, oh crap, where's the, you know, I know. In those presentations also are the possible, well, the equivalent mills that we would need to build the building. So either, you know, there would be a minimal tax increase of, it was like 1.74 mills, which equals out to approximately $200 per household, which is phased in over the next, I think it was 10 years. Or we take that and we try to make ourselves budget for that. We reallocate funds that we have in the budget towards the project and try to get through some of that coming up in the next couple of years, and also using reserve funds. Good. I know. Fiscally conservative Democrat, shocking.
I just want to make one more comment. The committee decided to move forward with this because I know we've been talking about a possible building, and now we're letting the board know that the committee recommends a new high school.
And Terry, can I ask, how will a project team be formed? Are we opening it up for anybody in the community to be part of it? Are we asking people? It's all ...
It's going to be open to anybody that would like to come on and give us their opinion. Like I said, if the board recommends to go ahead with this, the project team will decide the location, and would also, I guess, recommend, once we get the RFPs, who the architectural team would be, even though the board would vote on that.
There's a number of teams, so, I mean, there's obviously the core team, which would be consistent of, let's say, architect, PR, lawyers, bankers, admin, central admin, school-based admin, teachers, they're kind of a core team. But then there's a number of kind of design teams that we set up so that we can get ideas. We'd obviously want to talk to those who teach science, so that we can actually get an idea of what science rooms look like, talk to guidance counselors, talk to math teachers. So we do spend our due diligence to make sure that we set up a number of committees so that we can talk to all the stakeholders about what we want the new space to look like. So there'll be ample opportunities for anybody, so to speak, and anybody to come and give their input, so that the architect will be well-informed about what we want that space to look like.
Okay. Thank you.
Part of the discussion at the committee as well surrounded the financial, you know, discussion with this. And, you know, we've been talking about this project for a long time, and I, as a banker, looked at our financial picture very deeply and felt there's probably no better time than now for us to be in this process. We have cash in the bank, we have a great credit rating, we have very low debt at this point, and interest rates have nowhere to go but up. So if we wait, surely we'll be paying higher rates, higher interest costs. Now's the time to lock it in and get the due he can. I mentioned that if I were looking at this as a banker for a commercial loan deal, I'd do this in a heartbeat. You know, this is a perfect financial picture. So one of the other reasons we thought this would probably be a good time to move forward now with this, so.
And would, Mr. Cherry, would you do, like, a community outreach, like a town hall meeting or something to address this? Because I know, I've already heard about it, the butcher shop and everywhere else. So I just think, you know, at least if you invite people, whether or not they come, is there ...
Part of the PlanCon process is the fact that Jen and I will have to host a number of town meetings because we have to explain the financial situation so that they understand what our current financial situation is. And we kind of do, kind of what Ken Phillips said, best-case scenario, worst-case scenario, so that they have a true understanding of what we're doing with. So it's an obligation through PlanCon to actually do that and document those meetings. So only ones required, but I see a number of them because I think, you know, we have even just four communities with our elementaries, making sure that we're strategic about hitting all of those communities, and even almost doing a roadshow, too. It's always good to have those meetings here, but you and I both know, over the years, we have them, three people show up, we end up sitting there staring at each other, you know, you don't even do the PowerPoint, you just kind of sit there and talk about it. So I think, I'd also like to work with community agencies to say, hey, can we utilize your facility for an evening, or add on to something that you're already doing, so that we can infuse ourselves. I think all of us know, going through a number of building projects, that communication is key. It keeps people happy and informed, and, you know, we don't have a trail of people out the boardroom because they're misinformed, and we're trying to spend all evening correcting it. So we'll make sure to do our due diligence to inform all of our taxpayers about what this will do to them.
That's good.
And I think it wouldn't be a bad idea to also reach out to the township and partner with them, maybe. I know the zoning officer very well, and she and I have actually, I think I mentioned this to you, she and I have decided to create an unofficial pow-wow between the two of us after our meetings to keep them informed of what we're doing and vice versa. I think that would be a great opportunity to bring them, to bring everybody together and, you know, kind of make it a community thing, as opposed to, no, this is a school district thing, this is a township thing. I think, the more people we can include, I think the better things will go.
Any other questions for Mr. Emmig or Mr. Rahouser? Okay, hearing none, we will move on to Safe and Supportive Schools with Mr. DeSho. Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped Human and Fiscal Resources, the most exciting one of the night. Mr. Cook?
I thought maybe you knew something I did. That's okay. We met this evening. Don't have a lot to report. There's a number of policies that we looked at tonight that will be up for full board approval next month at our normal voting meeting. The policies that are listed under Human and Fiscal Resources on our agenda tonight basically are policies that we currently have in place, some we voted in place to follow federal guidelines that we needed to have in place for a recent audit. PSBA has now come out with their recommended language, so we're basically just going back and revising these, tweaking them, not major changes. But in all these cases, that's sort of what's going to be recommended, is PSBA language. Just a couple of things worth noting. Board Policy 609 has to do with investment of district funds. The language there has been updated to include Act 10, which relates to permissible investment vehicles with what the school can invest in, and sort of the, you know, the requirements for limitations and FDI insurance and all that stuff that most of us probably look right past. But that's, all these things are basically an implementable policy based on funds there. So that's really all I have, so if you have a chance, look them over, and we'll be bringing them to the full board then next month for approval.
Any questions for Mr. Cook? Okay, I do have one item, then. We need to appoint a treasurer that begins July 1st, their term. So I would like to make a motion to appoint Steve Cook as our treasurer for the next year. Is there a second?
I second it.
Mr. DeSho. Oops, sorry. I'll let technology catch up here.
I thought we were doing this next evening.
We have a motion and a second. We'll just do this as a voice vote.
I'm sorry, who was the motion again?
Me. And Mr. DeSho has a second. So all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, thank you, Mr. Cook. Now we'll move on to Safe and Supportive Schools and Technology with Mr. DeSho.
Okay, we had three items. The first one, Policy 824, Maintaining Professional Adult Student Boundaries. We finally got done with how we're going to write it. We're going to send it over to CJ approval to be able to be voted on at the next meeting. Also, with Standing Orders for Nurses, we're going to bring that to vote in July, August. Recommending how it is is fine for us, so we'll bring that up. Also, there was a meeting today with the, I'll let Mr. Cherry talk about it.
We mentioned it last month, we're going to go forth with planning for an active shooter drill. So one of the things that we wanted to make sure that we got out of it were a number of things. So today was a matter of goal-setting. So the first one was, we wanted to make sure that we had a parent and community reunification system built in to reunite, obviously, parents or guardians with their students. Our second goal is to ensure that our current policies and procedures align to emergency management and/or safety support such a drill. And our third goal is really to make sure that we establish an effective and efficient communication system to ensure all of our stakeholders are informed in a timely manner. So part of having this drill is just not simply to do the drill to have it, but to make sure that we get something out of it. So those were the three goals that we established as a district to get out of that. Northern Regional will be establishing their goals, and they plan to come back next month to communicate them. We also finalized our location, so the drill will take place at North Salem Elementary School, and our reunification site will be the Dover Area Intermediate School. So those are officially the locations that we have selected. What we're planning to do right now is Chief Gunson and his staff will be visiting both North Salem and the Intermediate School during their back-to-school evenings to inform parents, to tell them a little bit about this. They've obviously been through this process a few times, and we have those dates already scheduled, and they're on their calendar, so they will be working with Chris and also working with Galen to schedule those more in-depth. And we will also host a number of faculty meetings to make sure that the faculty will be aware of what the process is. Our goal is to meet on a monthly basis to start, and we think about six months out, we'll start meeting twice a month. We kind of agreed that we didn't want the committee to be too large, so every month we will determine what our homework is for the next month, and part of that homework assignment will also be inviting any other stakeholders that need to be part of that process. So we had a pretty involved meeting this morning. This will be the first elementary school that's ever been done, so there's a lot of learning on both sides as we think about this. So as we meet on a monthly basis, we'll come back and share that information with the board of where we're at. We also plan to communicate this via our website, it's kind of like an ongoing blog or a communication link, so that as we lead up to this event in May, that parents are being informed along the way, and kind of can read the history of how it's developed, and obviously have an area where they can contact us if they have questions and/or concerns. The one thing I do want to make sure that everyone understands, this is a voluntary activity, so students will have the ability to either volunteer, or their parents can opt them out. So that was one of the things that we also established today, that students will not be, quote-unquote, "forced" to participate if they choose not to.
Anything else?
Technology-wise, I got to view the website today. It's absolutely amazing, exciting, excited for when it pops out.
Any questions for Mr. DeSho?
I just, I have a question with the EpiPen thing. Were you going to go, did you talk about that? That's on our ...
The EpiPen, it's a ... The EpiPen, it's for the standard orders for nursing. The EpiPen School Act 195, we looked into it, it was updated in 2014.
Yeah, I worked on that bill. I wrote that bill, actually.
There you go.
And when we, one of the things, when I wrote it, that if we do decide to do something where we make EpiPens available to those who don't have a prescription for EpiPens, one of the, I guess I'll give a backstory real quick, I apologize. Back in 2008, when I first came upon this issue, there was a little girl in Virginia who was stung by a bee at recess, had no idea she was allergic to bees, and died because it takes two minutes for an anaphylactic reaction to kill you, and nobody could legally give her an EpiPen, so she died. So that was one of the motivating factors in writing the legislation, that we wanted to be able to have the option for parents and for the schools, without getting sued, to be able to inject the EpiPens into somebody who doesn't have a prescription. So there is a general prescription that the school district can get, and EpiPen, the manufacturer, actually gives free EpiPens to the school districts, if that is something that we're interested in. So just to, just-
We are actually receiving the free EpiPens this year again.
Awesome.
Two for Bill, two for Billings, and two here.
Awesome. I will get off my soapbox then. Sweet, awesome. Are they the ones that talk to you?
No.
Any other questions? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the Board Assigned Representatives category. First up is the Dover Eagle Foundation. The foundation is on summer hiatus at this point. We did, in the facilities meeting tonight, talk about the possibility of the foundation becoming involved with helping to raise funds as part of cost offsets for the new building project, things such as naming rights, the marquee, you know, so things like that would be an opportunity for those outside the community or within the community that would want to provide some funding towards this, give them the opportunity to do that in a charitable way and get the write-offs. So that was part of that conversation. Any questions for me on the foundation, other than that? Okay, we'll move on to the York Adams Academy with Mr. Remick.
I attended the graduation for York Adams Academy last Tuesday evening. It was a nice event. We had four student speakers that gave their speeches, and I think we had four, I think, students from Dover that graduated from there. And officially, Dr. Lombardo of Spring Grove retired. Will be retiring the end of June, so he is no longer the Superintendent of Record for York Adams Academy, but Dr. Lenardi of West York has taken over the realm of Superintendent of Record. That's all I have at this point.
How many students overall graduated?
I knew you were going to ask me that, and I left that amount at home. I know it was, I think it's close to 3,700 since 1990.
Any questions for Mr. Remick? Okay, Mr. Delauter, you're at County School of Technology.
Again, we did have a graduation for School of Technology back, I believe it was June the 8th, unfortunately, I couldn't attend that. There were several Dover students that graduated, and I want to say 20, but I don't remember that number off the top of my head, and I don't have my paperwork with me, unfortunately. But it was kind of interesting to see the students, and they did highlight one of our students as one of the students that's graduating, so it was kind of nice to see that. Other than that, we have a meeting next week. Nothing else is happening?
Okay, anything for Mr. Delauter? Okay, moving on to LIU and Special Education with Mr. Cherry and Mrs. Benko.
I don't have anything to say.
Neither do I.
Legislative Liaison, Mr. Rahauer.
According to the information out there, they're pushing to get the budget done this month, and there's a reason behind it, it's because it's an election year, and so they got to get a budget done.
Any questions for Mr. Rahauer? Okay, PSBA representative, I believe that's actually Mrs. Britton now, right?
Yeah, there's really nothing, the updates that have been going out have been just primarily on the recent 1555 that have been implemented, and how they're affecting school districts. And most of the things that I've seen are school districts that don't have money, and as we were talking about, you know, we're in a very good financial state right now, so that kind of makes me take a deep breath and relax as I read everything that PSBA has sent out. But other than that, it's been pretty quiet.
Any questions for Mrs. Britton?
Does she know her new assignment?
She has not been informed of her new assignment yet, unless she looked at a Tuesday meeting.
I officially retract that.
I was briefly.
You go to Hershey with me.
Oh, great. No, I was not informed of my new-
Not Hershey Park.
Aww. No, I was not informed of that assignment.
We'll talk afterwards.
Oh, great. We're totally going to Hershey Park though.
Next is Mrs. Herman with the Dover Industrial Development Committee.
Okay, I have one more week of babysitting duty, so I could not go. So Mr. Betton has everything we need.
Just a quick update, I don't know if anybody realizes what the Dover Industrial Development Committee Authority does. It's a group of about 15 people. It has grown, I've been on it since September, October timeframe. It has grown from five or six to about 15 now. As of last night, we had our latest meeting last night. It is a think tank of how to promote business to help make a better tax base for the township and for the school district. They have done a lot of rezoning. There are two packets that are laying on your, that I put on your computers. Starting July 1, this first packet that says Dover Township Business and Economic, this is going to be on their new website, it'll be pushed out. Right now, you can pick up hard copies at the Township Building, but this is just demographics and everything that's going out to businesses to promote the township, why they would want to bring their businesses into York, I mean, into Dover Township here. The education portion was written from the superintendent's office that we gave them to talk about our school system, all right, and how we're preparing our students for the workforce for whatever business will come in, okay? The other portion that you see in your little packet, these are some of the properties that are the hot properties by local realtors that they're looking to push out for development. So there's actually four properties that have been rezoned for industrial or commercial, you can take a look at that. A little clarification, these are just snapshots off their webpage that will be going out on July 1, okay, for local people wanting to know where they can build. We are, York Economic Alliance has been working with us, they are actually going to come in and do a presentation next month at the next meeting, which is July 27 at 4:00 PM at the Township Building, and it'll talk about the new gigabyte line coming in for the internet, and what that's going to mean for small to medium manufacturing. Every place where the new gigabit line has come in, takes Kansas City, Chattanooga, Tennessee, that county has seen, or that city has seen tremendous industry growth. So that line will be coming through York. What does that mean for Dover Township and for our small to medium industry? And the four properties that you see there could handle some small to medium industry. There are four areas that we've discussed about retail gap, discussion analyzations, one is specialty food service, specialty food stores, medical and personal care stores, and just general merchandise. So those are some of the areas that we are looking at, at coming up brainstorming to push up to the supervisors, and then it's the supervisors that are going to react to whatever our think tank brings to them. There are two supervisors that have been attending, they don't have any other than just listening power in this group, but the township supervisors are very much in favor. They do want to bring more industry into the township. Last night was the first night that we had Dover Borough represented, so they're coming on board. So they're very excited that the school district is on board, Dover Borough's showing up. There is somebody from Seth Grove's office that attends every meeting, there's somebody from York Economic Alliance that's attending every meeting. So you have some very key players coming in to look to make the growth for the tax base for our school district and for our residents here. So if anyone's interested, it's the fourth Wednesday of every month at 4:00 at the Township Building. Any questions?
I have a question. In these strategy sessions that you're looking at, that the group's looking at, is there, do you look at infrastructure, roadways, anything like that when you make recommendations or when you're looking at properties, is there-
Yes, they're actually, when they first started, I believe the group started about a year ago, they actually had Rock Commercial Realty, they actually did a whole data analysis. The one thing that Dover lacks, Dover Township lacks, is the transportation. But as far as utilities, the infrastructure for water, sewer, telephone, and power, we have the ability to meet those demands. Our biggest downfall is our transportation in and out, the road structure. I can tell you that there is on docket, they are looking at, it's in conversation in the Metropolitan Planning Commission, looking at it, doing something at Canal and I-83, which would help out our township very nicely, and our school district, if they would decide to put an interchange there. Okay, because that's within, I believe it's six miles, and it's a direct line coming down Canal Road. So there are some things like that. So a lot of the stuff that you're asking, that has been researched, developed, and now we're thinking outside of the box on how to bring and how to promote. The biggest thing was, the township redid their webpage, you know, letting people know, all the realty, industry realty companies are getting a hold of this. York Economic Alliance, they actually go around the country looking for people to bring in business. So they're on board a little bit, not to the depth that maybe we're looking at future how much they're going to be inputting. They also charge, and I don't know what the township is looking at as far as paying them to help that too. So we're basically a think tank. It is chaired by Mr. Patterson, who's also on our foundation, so he's the one that actually chairs the meeting. Any other questions?
Anything else for Mr. Betton? Okay, thank you, Mr. Betton. Next up is our superintendent's report, Mr. Cherry.
I wanted to bring back to the board a voting matter that was turned down on Tuesday for possible reconsideration, but before I begin doing that, I kind of felt compelled to start with a few thank yous. First of all, I wanted to thank Mrs. Slater for showing up. She was our only parent to show up from the community to make public comment for us, and I did attempt to reach out to her again today to let her know that I would be speaking about this matter again. I spoke to her husband, actually, she had another commitment, but I wanted to commend her and thank her for showing up to voice her concern, and to give us some things to consider if this topic were to continue. The second one is, I actually want to thank my administrative staff at the school, so unfortunately, they've been playing ping pong back and forth between, are we moving times, not moving times, when are we moving times, how are we going to move times? So thank you for hanging in there as we try to build a systemic system where all staff get the opportunity to collaborate, just not a certain group. My third thank you goes actually out to the high school staff who did a large amount of work that led up to that schedule being developed and so forth. I kind of felt, I know Mrs. Herman mentioned it, and I appreciate it, but I felt somewhat in the celebration of the vote getting, the vote being turned down, that that was lost, because there was a lot of work hours that went into, and that's just my interpretation, but I felt like in that celebration, what was soured was the fact that there were a group of people who worked really, really hard to make that happen, and I'm uncomfortable with that divide existing, so I felt like I needed to say that because some people did a whole lot of work in trying to figure out what they could also get in the same organization to be consistent across our district. And my last thank you actually goes out to the board for allowing me to bring this back, because I think it's an important issue for us to continue to consider the fact that we do want to bring consistency, and that's one of the things that we have been dealing with since day one, since I have been starting, is to try to be more consistent, not even across our district, but even across our schools, because sometimes there's so much inconsistency, even at the elementary, you have four buildings, and sometimes you can go into them and see that. So I think we've worked hard to be consistent, so this topic of trying to ensure that there's some form of collaborative time for all staff, I think is important. So we left Tuesday night, some of us not getting any sleep, some of us getting 90 minutes of sleep, and we picked the phones started, I think the text messages continued throughout the evening about how we could make this work, what could this possibly look like? Could there be a compromise and a win somewhere in the middle? So before you, enough for public view, we posted today a possible consideration for the board to look at that, once again, would allow collaboration to be K-12. It would allow for, for the most part, our intermediate school to continue their collaboration time at the end of the day, very similar to the process that they have now. It would build in collaboration for our high school at the middle, or I'm sorry, at the beginning of the day, and then the push would be during the six-day cycle, during our elementary times during the middle of the day, to actually make more of that time, actually collaboration time, and less of it structured by others. In the end, it looks to be about a 10-minute push for elementaries versus a 20 minutes that was recommended, so it is slightly closer to what their current schedule is. The biggest hiccup of all is to ensure that we have enough time between secondary runs and elementary runs. I would love to say in a perfect world that we wouldn't have to worry about this, that we would have enough buses, but the bottom line is, we simply don't. Our longest secondary run is 55 minutes, so I have to at least, whether or not those high school students ride that bus or not, on paper, I have to account for at least 55 minutes of drive time for one high school bus to ensure that it has enough time to pick kids up and/or drop students off at the end of the day. So what you see in front of you, for the most part, between our secondary runs and our elementary runs, would be this 55 minutes. It doesn't leave a lot of leeway, so if a bus gets stuck in traffic or gets behind a slow car, so to speak, you know, that 55 minutes may increase. However, we did lock it down into 55 minutes. So once again, we even calculated, I think Mrs. Herman and I were talking earlier, about how much hourly time does this represent? So for our high school students this year, it would equate to about 1,100 hours, and that's also for our secondary kids that are at the intermediate school, and even our elementary students would be getting 1,100 hours. And keep in mind, it's elementary students only need 900 hours in school, and our secondary only need 990. So this schedule, along with our calendar, accounts for a large amount of time for our students. To me, 10 minutes compared to the 20 is minimal compared to what it was, so I ask for your consideration to look at this bell schedule, to make some type of recommendation so that my staff can go forth with printing things, letting teachers know when their day is going to begin, setting up schedules and making sure that a simple, even a simple matter as lunch for our students can be scheduled and established. So most of the things that we talked about on Tuesday still exist, however, the only difference between that schedule and this one is a matter of 10 minutes for elementary.
Board members, do you have any questions for Mr. Cherry at this point about this new proposal before us?
Just a quick one about the bus. So there's one bus that takes 54 minutes, did you say? Is that a bus that has to do a second run? Do all of our buses do second runs?
No, only select buses do second runs.
So could that possibly be a bus that doesn't have to do a second run? Maybe some of the ones that do long runs just be taken out of the equation in terms of having to come back? And then maybe we won't have as big of a gap?
That is just one, that is just one run, so we can attempt to, Jared and I were speaking today, he can actually accept, even though you see a start time of 7:50, he can actually accept students earlier- you see a start time of 7:50, he can actually accept students earlier than that because there'll be activities in school. And I think we actually heard a parent mention about time for her child to work, Mrs. Slater, actually, her son to work with high school. That's a prime example of a time where, you know, if he would get to school, he could work with him. So we could work on possibly getting that bus out faster, but I don't want to guarantee it because, like I said, there could be a hiccup. So I still want to plan for that 55 minutes regardless, just simply it gives me leeway to say if we can do it fast, they're great, but in the event that there's inclement weather, you know, and I need to leave kids out earlier or early or actually bring them in late, that 55 minutes can kind of stand true to the test of time. But they're not included in a second run, though.
Okay, I guess, okay. I was just trying to figure out why, why does it matter if that takes that bus 55 minutes to get there if it doesn't have to do a second run? It's not, we're not waiting for that bus to finish its run so that it can come back and pick up elementary kids?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
So if a bus is taking secondary kids, they take them to school, drop them off, and then that, there's a bus that has a second run, then they have to go back and pick up all the elementary kids. I get that there needs to be enough time for a bus to drop off the secondary kids and then be able to make the run again. But if a bus like that doesn't have a second run, then they're really kind of out of the equation in terms of being a bus that has to go and do a second run.
There isn't a second run.
There is no second run.
When we say second run, that means that they run the same neighborhood. You're saying two separate buses that do the 55-minute run?
That bus that you're referring to goes to Washington.
Right. So it does a secondary run, and then it goes back and does an elementary run? Okay, so that's what I'm saying. Does that bus have to do that elementary run, or can there be another bus that does the elementary?
We don't have extra buses.
Okay. Okay.
Sorry, because when we say second runs, I assume that they're quickly going around the community, dropping kids off, and going back around to do another one, so I got confused.
Okay. All right.
So, yeah, unfortunately, we don't have.
So we don't have, there's no extra buses to utilize to do something like that?
We might have one or two, but they could be, they're usually used just in case a bus breaks down, one gets stuck. We have a special field trip that we need to send students out first, but we don't include that one in the equation simply because it's backup for many reasons. I mean, even in cold weather, there are sometimes a bus doesn't start, so having that backup is needed. So I'd hate to allot for 100% of the buses and then not have a backup in the event that we need one. So all the buses that we purchase and have are utilized.
Mr. Cherry, you're asking us to take action tonight to approve this change so that we can move ahead with communications for the community, the printing of all the materials?
If need be. I mean, waiting until the end of July would literally be an impossible task. It would be hard for us to set schedules for high schools. We need to set up bus runs, we need to run schedules for our busing and so forth, we need to get that information out. I mean, it's mailers, there's a lot that needs to actually get impact, there's a lot of impact in terms of even parents just knowing when their kids are getting in, on and off the bus and so forth. So it involves a lot, just the simple schedule.
Okay. Board members, have any other questions?
Has Deb Curry been, isn't she in charge of transportation now, correct? Okay. Has anybody approached her about this? And the only reason I'm saying that is because I know several years ago, they started doing bus runs using a computer program. And I'm guessing they're still using the same program. But I know there's buses that actually, in a development, pass each other. And parents were like, why is this happening? So I just remember things, I'm just throwing this out, is this like still happening? Is there, can people sit down and try to come up with a bus run that sometimes computers like your GPS? Aren't they great? I don't know, is there something like that that could be?
There are, and that's always a task, but it's always about capacity. So, you know, you have a large residential area, one bus typically isn't large enough. So that was actually a question when I first started because I rode the buses at Live. So I remember being in a community, and I'm like, well, why didn't we pick up that kid? Have we just passed them? And they're like, well, that's for the other bus. And that was one of the questions early on. So sometimes there are multiple buses in a community because you are going to do a double run. So you have one bus that quickly goes through and picks up a certain amount of kid because that might be the overflow for that bus in that particular community. So the reason why we didn't pick them up, because they'll be picked up by the overflow bus, because this bus is a priority, because they're going to go back to Live, drop kids off so it can do a second run in another neighborhood. So it's a pretty sophisticated process, and I agree with you. It's even like scheduling at the high school. You throw everything in there, for the most part, 80% of it's good, and then you get to the singletons and you start scheduling them hand by hand by hand, and that's kind of what happens in large residential areas, especially in the time when we have to do a double run. So they spend a lot of time. So this is why this is important, because that factors into all of that.
I do have a question. I think, Mr. Cook, you had alluded to this earlier in an email, you had a question on that, and it kind of got my wheels spinning. While I appreciate being part of the discussion on this, I'm just wondering that as a board, is it our responsibility and is it within our scope to be setting bell schedules? To me, it would seem that it's more of an operational-type decision that would be best left to the administration to handle. So I think if you're looking, getting down into the weeds, I think this is, as a board, I think we're getting into the weeds instead of taking that 30,000-foot view of the district. So I guess my question is, is this a board function?
I consulted with our solicitor, CGA. Mr. Fields was here the other night, and I consulted with him today. And under policy, we do have to approve the schedule for the year, like we do the calendar. So we would have to approve the times that are before us tonight. So now, you talk about getting down into the weeds. Getting down into the weeds, to me, is us trying to figure out how to come up with this. So us talking bus schedules, bus routes, all that, that's getting down into the weeds, to me, where we really should not be, you know, as a board member.
All right. So that being said, I don't see how we can wait because parents have to change daycares. This has got to be decided tonight. I wish we could have had this earlier, that maybe we could have even worked harder on it. I am pleased that there is a difference, that we did. And I could probably go with this a lot easier if we wouldn't have added 10 minutes last year because of the programs at the high school having, being too close with minutes. So we're already increasing the day for the little ones, but I don't see how we can wait. I just don't. If this is going to have to go, it's going to have to go tonight.
I'd agree. This impacts the entire community as well as staff. You know, we need to be prepared for the upcoming school year and to wait till late July. We can't at this point. So with that, I'd like to make a motion for the school board to approve the updated bell schedule as presented by Mr. Cherry tonight. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Are there any questions or discussions?
Yes. It is something that needed to be posted, things that we vote on for school policy needing to be posted so many days in advance. And I'm just asking that so we don't get in trouble as to whether anybody checked with CGA, if that has to be posted or did need to be posted.
I did post it this afternoon. I mean, the boards do have the right to bring something forth. I do remember even motions last year that were brought forth that weren't items on the agenda, that made a motion and were passed and approved. So it was posted this afternoon at some point in time.
Well, that isn't really posting, just putting it on the, I'm just raising this because, so we don't get in trouble.
Any other questions?
Just like to make the comment to, yeah, what I shared, what Chuck was referring to there in the email and questioning, you know, are we going off the deep end here, going too far into this process? And our last Tuesday night, when we listened, we heard, you know, principals from all levels basically say we need to move ahead. This is a process that needs to happen. So, you know, thank you to those that took the initiative to go back and bring forth another, you know, another solution to it. It is a compromise, it is kind of splitting the difference. And so, you know, hats off to those who have been involved in that. And, you know, I think we as a board, if we're going to vote on this, you know, it is a public meeting, it was a posted public meeting, you know, we've announced now that, you know, we have to, because of the circumstances, sort of an emergency situation. So I would, I would agree that we do need to move, you know, because we just don't have the time to postpone.
Okay. And again, we need to be careful not to do this at the last minute again. And also, I think it's extremely important that we set some kind of a goal for ourselves that everybody in the district takes part in any conversation that affects the entire district. Because that's what's happening now, we have this issue, we have a firestorm because, just because some people weren't brought into the conversation. And if we're PLC, we need to bring everybody in that's involved.
Okay. I want to make comments as well. I obviously wasn't here Tuesday, and my thoughts are, and one of the things I said in my interview was that we've got decent to strong scores at the elementary and middle school, but more so the elementary. But the high school specifically is, falls down to a 3 out of 10, I think was the last time I checked on the PDE website. One of my goals in being a board member is to strengthen our high school, and I see this as an excellent opportunity to do just that, to provide with the opportunity and the time that he needs to strengthen our teachers and provide them with skills and reinforcement and support that they need to enhance our kids' education. It's 10 minutes now, I mean, even at 20 minutes. And as far as time goes, you're preaching to the choir with complaints, I work in Harrisburg, I have to be there at 9:00. Is this going to affect me? Of course, but for me, as a parent, it's worth it because ultimately, it's going to enhance the quality of my child's education. And I commend everybody, again, for their hard work and dedication on this and echo a lot of the sentiments by Mr. Cook and Mr. DeLauter. And I really, I tell people, when people come to me and voice their opinions, I tell them how I feel, and then I tell them, I see Dover and our school district going in great places. And I would love, and I want, well, the reason why I'm here is to ensure that we keep going in that direction. And I think this is one of those things that we can do to support our educators and our administrators to ensure that we do keep Dover, you know, when we say Dover proud, we are Dover proud because we want to offer our children the best education possible. And I just, I know there's going to be a little pushback, but I feel that it's worth it. I mean, it's something that I, as a parent, would be willing to sacrifice, and I don't even want to use the term sacrifice because, again, it's 10 minutes, but to, I think, you need to look at the ends, means to an end, and I see that in a very positive direction. So I thank all of you, the administrators, for working your hard work and dedication and, you know, the board for the, from what I hear on Tuesday was very civilized and productive discussion. So I'm very honored to be part of a great board that can collaborate as well as we have.
I'm sorry, I have one more question. The coaches that this affects, they have to, there are certain elementary coaches that have to leave before the days end to get to their duties. How many is that, how many teachers does that affect, elementary?
I don't have to count that up. I don't know offhand how many elementary teachers are coaches, so.
Do you know what happens to the children that are in those classes when they leave for coaching duties?
It'll be like coverage, split classes, someone watches the room. So they do what sometimes teachers do when they need to leave early for a doctor's appointment or something of that nature. So most of the time, teachers chip in to cover the students.
Any other questions or discussion? Mrs. Benko, we're going to do a vote. Are you set up electronically or do we need to do a voice?
Finally.
Okay, all right. Okay. We'll be forward with the vote.
It didn't come up online.
Try to refresh. Hit F5.
F5?
Need to relaunch.
Do I have to sign back in?
No.
I went to the sign back in page.
Sorry.
Okay.
Thank you again to our administrative team and everybody else who's been involved. I know that was a very challenging project for you. Okay. We'll move on to the miscellaneous category. Any other comments or observations from board members tonight?
Yeah, I just want to leave everybody know that the students from Dover that went along with the group of the music ambassadors have arrived in Barcelona today safely.
Anything else? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to our second public comment period for items on or off of the agenda. This is a two-minute period, so if you would like to make any comments, you may come to the microphones and state your name and address for the record, please.
Name is John Peters, 298 Bermuda Church Road. More of a question. I missed Tuesday's meeting, and I was curious about the high school and the need, the logistics and the presentation that took place. I mean, you've covered it here tonight, but that doesn't really cover much of anything. Is there any way to get information rather than wait several months until something shows up on the website?
Yep. We can certainly send you, if you, we can meet with you afterwards if you give us your email address. We can work on getting the information that was presented Tuesday tonight and any other financials that we've utilized at this point to discuss the building project to you. We have them ready and we can send those to you.
Good. And that will cover what the basis of the need was as well?
You can get an update on the feasibility and what Crabtree presented to the board.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Peters. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, we have our next meeting is in July. I do not have that date in front of me, though, on the screen here.
It was 19th.
19th, Tuesday, July 19th, and that will be our only meeting in July. There will not be committee meetings, that will be an action meeting. With that, is there a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, yes? Yes? Opposed? Motion carries, we're adjourned. Thank you for coming, everybody.